For item 6.1.1, direction was provided to the negotiators. And for item 6.1.2, direction was provided to the negotiators. I will note for the record that council member, or sorry, Mayor Bowders recused himself at 7:04 PM. And for the last remaining item, item 5.1.1, I would defer to the mayor as to whether there's any reportable action.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. There is no reportable action for item 5.1.1. That concludes the report out, and the time is 7:14, Madam Clerk, and we have concluded the Emeryville Special Closed Session Meeting. And I'll give her one moment to click all the buttons. And the time is 7:14 PM, and I'm calling to order this meeting of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. And I'm going to begin by reading the script that will be applicable to all the meetings we have this evening. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to newly enacted Assembly Bill 361. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus, and which expired on September 30th. This new bill gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1st, 2024, so long as California is under a governor-declared state of emergency. In order to continue making meetings subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the City Council must make findings by a majority vote every 30 days that the current circumstances have been reconsidered, and that the state of emergency continues to impact the ability of members of the public to meet safely in person, or that the state and local officials continue to impose or recommend social distancing measures. The City Council's successor agency and Mesa Board will consider whether to make these findings at least every 30 days until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and can be found on the website for further details on the planning and building counter. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting that is being livestreamed online via ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to the City of Emeryville's main website at www emeryville.org and by clicking on the "Council Agendas and Videos" section on the left. Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting by Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the "Raise Hand" feature, which is visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, by pressing *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as via e-notification and on social media. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. Thank you. Everybody is here. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda for the Mesa Board.
Submit.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Item 4, Ex parte communications, are there any to report? Seeing none. Item 5 is public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda. To the members of the public, this is the Mesa Board meeting, and so there will be one minute for public comment for the consent calendar on this agenda. Do we receive any speaker cards for the Mesa meeting?
We did not.
Okay, and I see one hand raised, member from the public. You will have one minute to speak. Please recognize Brian Donahue.
One moment.
He's unmuted. Go ahead.
Can hear me.
We can. We have one minute.
Recently, my wife and I, and along with our daughter, decided to look into renting an Emeryville BMR unit, low-market rate unit, government-assisted unit. We decided to inquire about renting one. So we tried to do that, but the City of Emeryville refused to return our calls and emails. So then we contacted Hello Housing, the private, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit housing organization that contracts with the City of Emeryville to manage its affordable housing program. And they also refused to answer our calls and emails. And then I contacted the State of California Housing Authority and the Alameda County Housing Authority and committed an official complaint against the City of Emeryville and Hello Housing that we were not being allowed to get information about the Affordable Housing Program in the city, and that we want, there were filed an official complaint. And then a week later, we got a phone call from the President and CEO of Hello Housing, Jennifer Duffy, who apologized profusely for not returning our calls. I asked her, "Why didn't you return our calls?" She responded that the City of Emeryville, City Manager Christine Daniel, had directed her at Hello Housing to not return any of our phone calls or any of our emails or texts. That's a crime. So the state law, federal law, states that government-assisted housing has to be accessible, the housing resources provided by the government have to be accessible to all people equally, even unpopular people. So I'm unpopular at City Hall, I understand, I understand that. But it doesn't matter, it's immaterial. You have to provide us with the same housing access, government-assisted housing access that you do with everybody else. The City of Emeryville broke laws. Unethical, it's illegal, unethical, and it's immoral.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, I'm going to recognize, okay. Ms. Montgomery, we have had this problem. If it says "raise hand," by clicking it, you're raising your hand. So if you wish to speak, please hit "raise hand." And we did receive a speaker card from you for the next item, but I'm going to allow you to speak now because you have your hand raised. So Ms. Montgomery, you have one minute. If you'd like to unmute, then go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought it was three minutes. If Sheri wants to read my statement, that's fine.
Okay, we will do that at the regular meeting, which is when you submit your comment for, and that'll be...
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so are there any other members of the public who wish to speak for this meeting, the Mesa meeting? Okay, seeing none, members, I'll move to the consent calendar and ask, is there a motion on this calendar?
I move. I'll second.
Motion by Member Martinez and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. That's approved. Item 7.1 is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mesa, amending the 2021 regular meeting schedule to allow for an additional meeting in January 2022. This staff report outlines just an option to have a meeting on January 4th or at another time that we agree upon in order to conduct the regular business of Mesa. At this time, I'll call for public comment on the calendar. There's one minute of public comment afforded to this item. If you wish to speak on the calendar, you can raise your hand now. Okay, seeing none, I will ask if there is a motion on this calendar, a resolution.
I will move the resolution to add a meeting for the Management of Emeryville Services Authority to January 4th, 2022.
My second.
Okay, there's a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Member Donahue to approve the resolution for a January 4th meeting. Please call the roll.
May I confirm that the start time for that meeting would be at 5:00, as we suggested in the resolution?
I'll ask the motion maker if that's correct.
That's fine with me.
And the seconder, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is for 5:00 on January 4th. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The resolution is approved. And the time is 7:22, Madam Clerk, and I'm adjourning this meeting of Mesa. I'm turning now to our second short meeting, which is the City of Emeryville, serving as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. I've already given the disclaimer related to teleconferencing via COVID at the prior meeting, and please note that all members are still present. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this final agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Ex parte communications, is there anything to report from the members? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment. Public comment for the consent items or items not on this agenda. Members of the public will have one minute to comment on items in the scope of the Redevelopment Agency. And I will recognize and allow to speak. First speaker will be Brian Donahue. Welcome.
Yes, I would like to ask the City Manager Christine Daniel and the City Attorney Andrea Vichesuara, what citizens are denied housing information by the City of Emeryville? I looked at the municipal code, and I could not see that elucidated anywhere in the code. I know that at least my family was denied, but I want to know, are other families denied? And what is the basis for the denial? Is it racially based? My wife is Asian, my daughter is Asian, is it that? You guys don't like Asians? Is it like, because it's me, you don't like me personally? Because I'm unpopular at City Hall because I've been a critic of the politics of City Hall? Is there some other thing? I mean, I can't figure out why you're withholding the information about the Affordable Housing Program from my family. As you know, the law has, cannot be capricious, has to be equal, and equal access for everybody under the law. So I would like to find out who specifically is encoded at City Hall, who has denied information about government-assisted housing? So that's an open question. The Brown Act does...
Thank you, your time is up. Okay, is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak on the Redevelopment Agency? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Member Donahue and a second by Member Martinez to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The consent calendar and its items are approved. There are no action items this evening. The time is 7:25. I'm adjourning the Redevelopment Agency Successor Meeting. And the time is now 7:25 PM, and I'm calling to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. As I've previously stated, we have gone over the disclaimers relating to this meeting being conducted via video and teleconference pursuant to AB 361. And I'd like to note for the record that all members remain present for this meeting. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
Submit.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Welch to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. There are no special orders of the day. Announcements on committee and commission vacancies, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Bowders. As I mentioned in a previous meeting, we had no applicants for the unexpected vacancies, so we are going to re-advertise after the first of the year, and we'll set a schedule for the timing for accepting applications, and then when you will hopefully make your appointments to fill those vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item 6, which is council members' special announcements or reports on meetings in attendance. Is there any member who would like to report on a meeting? Member Medina?
Sure. I attended the East Bay EDA as Executive Committee as our North Towne's representative, North City's representative, and we created a 2022 Legislative Ad hoc Committee, which I'll volunteer for, set up our legislative platform, focusing on recovery. We also received a very thorough federal legislative update, and we shared the packet, happy to share. They have lobbied us to attract a ton of infrastructure grants and funding sources.
Thank you for that update. Are there other members who wish to provide an update? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the City Manager's report. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing substantive, but just on behalf of city staff, want to wish all members of the council a very happy holiday season, and thank you so much for your leadership.
And we want to thank all the staff and the employees of the City of Emeryville for being outstanding representatives and supporters of the work that the City Council and the community are trying to accomplish here, and we wish all of you a very happy holiday season and a safe and healthy new year. And with that, I will move to ex parte communications. Members, are there any items on today's agenda for which you need to provide an ex parte communication or a recusal? Okay, I'm seeing the shaking of heads across the board, so we will move then to public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda. For this meeting, members of the public are afforded three minutes to speak for an item that's on the consent calendar or not on the agenda this evening. You can do so by using the Zoom "Raise Hand" feature or pressing *9 on your phone. I do know that we received one online electronic submittal, and so I would like to ask first that the city clerk, please read that electronic comment into the record.
All right, this online speaker card was received from Elizabeth Montgomery. Dear Councilmember Welch, welcome to Emeryville. Again, I propose that the City of Emeryville council members and staff adopt a code of ethics and conduct. Would you please review the samples of ethical guidelines and assessments I emailed to the council, city attorney, and city clerk from the Institute for Local Government? And please post and make them available to our citizens and neighbors for their review on this website. Now, in our city's history, it behooves all Emeryville democratically-elected officials to pause and look at the ethical turns in our community. Passing the mayorship of a representative advocate for the arts community of our city is an omen that council judgment is consolidating along lines that may need careful oversight. From the recent budget, it is clear the city faces some financial challenges, and the uncertainty of the COVID pandemic seems ongoing. However, the endangerment of our city could compound without an ethical review. We await a statement or response from the City Council if you are willing to adopt a suggestion of new measures of ethical conduct or not. Thank you in advance for the courtesy of a reply. Happiest of holidays and rest and renewal.
Okay, thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment? And the general public comment for an item not on this agenda? I will recognize for three minutes, Brian Donahue.
Our Chief of Police has directed the entire police department, the Emeryville Police Department, to stop writing, issuing citations for vehicles blocking bike lanes, unless there's a red curb or a sign specifically saying, "No parking in that area." Our Chief of Police has decided bike lanes may be blocked legally. He put it in writing for me, and he cited California Vehicle Code to bolster his opinion that it's perfectly legal for bike lanes to be blocked. I had an attorney look at that, and the attorney told me that the chief had cherry-picked from the vehicle code parts of it to make it appear as if it's legal for vehicles to block bike lanes. But in fact, it's actually not legal. Here in Emeryville, we have the California Vehicle Code, plus we also have our own Emeryville Municipal Code that has a provision that says that vehicles may not block bike lanes. If you're a bicyclist riding along a street that has an official bike lane, you're actually required by law to ride in the lane, unless the vehicles, the lane is blocked, then you can swerve out into the traffic lane. So clearly, this is wrong. We, the five of you, need to get a handle on this. We can't have a rogue police department, a rogue Chief of Police, thinking that it's legal for vehicles to block bike lanes. It's extremely dangerous for bicycle safety to have bike lanes be blocked. And I've been wondering why we can't seem to solve this problem. I've been wondering why the police department doesn't issue tickets to violators, and now I know why. Because they think it's not a problem. So the five of you need to get a handle on this. We need to make Emeryville streets safer for bicyclists. All manner of transportation are allowed on our streets, bicycling, walking, and driving. And this is a total, it's basically a seizure by the driving community at the expense of the bicycling community, and it's extremely dangerous for bicyclists to swerve out into traffic lanes from bike lanes. So the five of you need to reel the Chief of Police back in and get him, you know, get him to start, to acknowledge that it's illegal to block our bike lanes. That's your challenge. I will do a toddler story about this coming up, but in the meanwhile, you need to start working on this. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Members, are there any items that you wish to pull or have a comment on? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Member Martinez, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue? Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. We now move to public hearings. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, approving a conditional use permit and design review permit to demolish two existing uninhabitable residential structures and replace them with two new residential structures at 1270 64th Street. Sequel determination is exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Navarrox.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, new council member Welch, welcome. And yes, I'll be speaking tonight, 1270 64th Street. I'll just wait for the presentation to be available. The applicant also has a presentation and is available for questions this evening.
My ask of all applicants this evening is that your presentation be 10 minutes or less. I will reserve the right to end your presentation if it's too long. Go ahead.
Sure.
I'll have it up here in just a moment.
Thank you, Sheri. Right, are we ready, Sheri?
One moment.
Okay.
There's a, something blocking the...
I might be wrong, Sheri, but I learned that if you right-click in the middle of the slide, it might actually just give you the option to make it the whole screen.
All right, is everyone seeing that now?
We're seeing it with the, now we see it. Great. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, so yes, tonight I'm presenting on 1270 64th Street, the proposal to demolish two existing uninhabitable residential structures and replace them with two new residential structures. Next slide, please. So the location here is on the north side of 64th Street, between Doyle Street and Blay. Next slide, please. So as a recap of this project, units are three-bedroom and two-bath. They're each approximately 1,500 square feet. The project is about 26 feet tall, and the front unit does have a one-car garage. Demolition of residential units requires City Council approval, which is why this project is here before you this evening. Next slide, please. So the lot itself is about 3,500 square feet. The two vacant dilapidated uninhabitable structures, they've been there for years. It's been a code enforcement issue ongoing. In 2018, there was a notice of violation. In order to repair and abate, in 2019, the Superior Court granted receivership. In July 2020, it was sold to the current owner, who in December of last year submitted an application. Next slide. Thank you. So in May of 27, in May 27 of 2021, earlier this year, the Planning Commission held a study session. They were generally supportive and recommended replacing the proposed front fence with plants and providing enough space for a car to park in the driveway in front of the building without blocking the sidewalk, and wanted the applicant to revisit designing the front windows. And they supported waiving a tree evaluation fee. So a tree removal permit is required for this project to move forward, and the tree removal requires replacement of the tree as well as a fee. And we talked about this extensively at the last City Council Study Session. Next slide, please. So at the City Council Study Session, the City Council was also generally supportive. And when it came to the tree valuation fee waiver, the council did not support that. And so the conditions of approval do not include a fee waiver. The applicant needs to pay the valuation of the fee of the tree, pardon me. So council also recommended increasing the size of the trees on the property and providing enough space for a car to park in the driveway, just like Planning Commission, and did not raise any concerns about the building design. Next slide, please. So changes were made to the revised plans before going to Planning Commission and the plans that you see before you tonight. So those changes are the fence at the front of the property was removed per recommendation. More details were added, such as labeling sliding doors and other details on the plans. The length of the driveway was addressed by accurately depicting the proposed landscaping, and I'm going to go into more detail of that later in the slide. So average-sized car, 14 and a half to 15 feet, can be accommodated in, between the front of the building and the sidewalk. And the smaller trees were replaced with larger trees, and all plants are now low-water users, and this application complies with the LWO requirement, which is a water-efficient landscaping ordinance. Next slide, please. So at the Planning Commission hearing in October for this, one public speaker was concerned about the street tree replacement, but once they heard staff's presentation on it, they were like, "Oh, okay, my concerns were mostly been addressed." And the Commission noted that the driveway length is consistent with the City Council recommendation, and they voted unanimously for the City Council to recommend approval. And as I mentioned before, the tree removal, no fee waiver is part of this plan anymore. Next slide, please. So the front unit and the rear unit are shown here. These are the existing conditions. Next slide, please. And this is what's proposed. And on the right, you're seeing the view up the east side of the property. So in the foreground is the side of the front unit, and the back is the rear unit. Next slide, please. And I just want to note on the last slide, my apologies, it showed a fence there, but as I said, the fence has been removed from these plans. So here is the front elevation. So this is facing the street. Next slide, please. And then here is the east elevation of the property, the two units. And the next slide, please. The north elevation, so this is the rear of the property, and you can see the in-context of the buildings nearby. Next slide, please. And the west elevation, showing the two units from the side. Next slide, please. So there's a lot going on in this slide, but I couldn't figure out a better way to show it. So on the left side are the existing conditions, and on the right side are proposed. Now, what's at top is what the applicant previously showed, and you can see it lacks a lot of detail. And this was what brought concern to the Planning Commission City Council about there not being adequate room to park a car in front of the building. So the building did not need to be shifted, because when you look at below, the two bottom slides, existing and proposed, once the applicant did a more accurate measurement of the public right-of-way and what was going on there, it was found that there would be adequate space to park a car so that it would not encroach onto the sidewalk where people would be walking. And that's depicted there in the lower right-hand slide. Next slide, please, or picture, rather, sorry. So here we have the full property, the existing site plan, and on the left side, and the proposed one on the right. You'll note on the existing site plan towards the top of the screen, that is the rear of the property. The existing building in the back is partially on a neighboring property, so one of the big changes in what's existing and proposed is that the new buildings, of course, meet all regulations, setback, and building code, et cetera, which the current buildings do not. Next slide, please. So again, here we're focusing on the revised proposed site plan, demonstrating that a car can be accommodated in the front of the building and also be consistent with the design guidelines for sidewalk area. Next slide, please. So there's the first, second floor here and the roof. So on the ground floor of both units are common living areas and a bathroom. And the second floor is where each unit has three bedrooms and two baths. And then the proposed roof has the solar panel area. Next slide, please. And then the landscaping plan, as I mentioned, is now water-efficient compliant, and the trees have been revised to be larger trees than what were previously proposed. Next slide, please. And here's the rendering. This is correct. This does not show a fence in the front because the proposed fence was removed from the front of the property. Next slide, please. And this is also the front, just looking directly head-on at the building. Next slide, please. And then looking from the east side of the building again from the front. Next slide, please. And then as if you're walking up the side of the building, this rendering includes where the trash cans were supposed to be stored. Because it's only two units, it's not required to have a trash enclosure. They're just required to be protected in such a way that they won't be knocked over or provide nuisance, and so they're protected here from the weather by the overhang and being up against the building. Next slide, please. And here's the materials for the project. There were no previous concerns about this raised by council. Next slide, please. So for general plan, general plan and zoning, this is a medium-density residential zone. It's also a zone of stability in the general plan, which means there's not predicted to be extreme changes in use or qualities of the areas. But it doesn't mean that buildings can't be modified. Buildings can absolutely be modified in a zone of stability, and buildings can also be torn down and rebuilt in a zone of stability with proper permits, as we're going through this process tonight. For zoning, it's medium-density residential. It's in the north Hollis overlay, and two units are permitted use in the RM zone. Next slide, please. So this does require bonus for FAR, and it is a base amount for residential density and building height, well, because there's no bonus for building height. Because the project is fewer than 10 units, no bonus points are required. Actually, though, in RM, there's findings that are required, that it's compatible with the neighborhood for building scale... that it's compatible with the neighborhood for building scale and form, and that it minimizes appearance of auto orientation. Also, because it's fewer than 10 units, this project is not required to be family-friendly. Next slide, please. So parking for the two residential structures, there is no parking minimum, as you're well aware. The maximum is two, and they have this proposed one parking space in the garage. And it said an additional car could park in the front, but it is not considered a required parking space. So for bicycle parking, there's no required parking for bicycles for two-unit projects, but it does have two long-term spaces provided. Next slide, please. So all required setbacks are met. There's no two-unit requirement for open spaces, but it does exceed the landscape requirement, and there are open spaces for both units on the property, even though they're not required. Next slide, please. So conditional use permit findings, that it's consistent with the general plan. Next slide. And the characteristics of the design are compatible with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. That the proposed use is compatible with emergency response systems, and the proposed plan contributes to the general ability in the community. Next slide, please. And also that the proposed use complies with the planning regulations. Next slide, please. So for the development bonus findings for the RM, it has to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood scale and form and street orientation, which are findings which staff has found to be true. Next slide, please. And the proposed project is designed to minimize appearance of off-street parking facilities. So this does comply with that. The maximum driveway meets... pardon me, let me try that again. The driveway width does not exceed the 10-foot maximum, and there is the garage that's covered and has a door on the front of it. Next slide, please. All right. For design review, the findings are that the design is consistent with the general plan and the urban design goals and policies. Next slide, please. That the design of the project is consistent with the design guidelines as well. Next slide, please. And the project is of a high design quality that's compatible with the area. Next slide, please. So for the demolition of residential structures, the applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as the demolished units. So there's two existing units, as I said, that are not habitable, and two units proposed replace it. That the replacement structures would feature design quality that is higher or higher than the structures to be demolished and is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. And lastly, that the elimination of the residential structures would not be materially detrimental to the housing needs or public interest. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission and staff recommend that the City Council approve the conditional use permit and design review permit for this project. I am available for questions, and the applicant is also available and has a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Navarre. Before we move to the applicant's presentation, are there any clarifying questions only from members as to anything presented to us by the staff? You can ask them again later if something comes up. Okay, seeing none, I will ask staff who I'm admitting to the space here to give the applicant presentation.
I believe Leo should be available.
Leo, okay, I see. Raise your hand. Okay, is that the only person? I've moved Leo over. Anyone else?
I believe Sheri has a list of the full applicant team.
Leo, you're permitted to speak. Is there anyone else who's going to be giving a presentation with you?
No, it's just me, just myself. Thank you.
Okay, so when Sheri has that up, we'll go ahead and hear your presentation on 127064th Street.
Thank you.
Oops. Sorry, this is giving me trouble tonight. Mayor Bowers, what was your trick? You said right-click?
Yeah, someone told me that if you right-click the middle of the screen, it gives you options to make it the full screen.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that.
Yeah.
Here, I'll just do it this way.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, City Councilmembers. So I'll try to be brief, because Navarre has already given an excellent presentation of the project. But let's start with the next slide, please. So just reiterating here, there is a significant portion of the existing rear building encroaching into the neighbor's lot. And really, our goal is to fit the new structures within the actual shape of the lot and following the zoning requirements or setbacks. Next slide, please. So these pictures are supplementing the ones already presented by Navarre, but the front... The top-right photo represents the rear side of the front unit. As you can see, the roof has already been collapsed. And this photo is actually from a couple months ago, so you can expect the conditions to be worsening due to the recent storms. None of these two... neither of these two structures are salvageable, so we really want to get them demolished as quickly as possible to make way for new... Two new single-family homes for sale. Next slide, please. So these are some of the early sketches of the project, trying to modernize the architecture, as well as trying to adhere to the neighboring architecture language, which actually this block is a mix of gable roofs, slope roofs, and low-slope roofs as well. Next slide, please. So nothing new here. It's just a matter of representing the actual conditions of the site plan. Next slide, please. So both of these units have three bedrooms and two bathrooms, perfect for new single families. Next slide, please. This represents the material board. We're trying to capture the wood siding of the existing neighbors, as well as complementing and contrasting with different colors and siding patterns. Next slide, please. So from the May 27th Planning Commission study session, we had a few comments. Next slide, please. The first one is to explain the connection to the Doyle Street policies and from the planning perspective, which we're trying, again, the architectural language is really trying to focus and complement the existing neighbor. Next slide, please. This was, again, like Navarre said, we revised our site plan to reflect accurate dimensions of the public right-of-way and made adjustments according to the minimum standards by the planning regulations, as well as improving the landscape on the public right-of-way and our front yard. Next slide, please. So this is before and after. Before represents the first Planning Commission study session rendering, and this is the conclusive rendering. Next slide, please. And then on our City Council session on July 6th, we were asked to, again, revisit the parking on the front yard as well as reconsidering the proposed trees. Next slide, please. So this front yard and parking area, I guess, which is not technically parking, because we are providing parking inside the garage, this is just the event in case, in the event that someone decides to park outside their garage, which leaves a 15-foot-eight clear dimension. Next slide, please. And again, just reiterating the rendering. Next slide, please. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leo. Are there members of the council who would like to ask questions of the applicant? My only questions for you, Leo, are, one, the 15-foot-eight dimension for the driveway, is that an extension from what we had previously seen at the study session?
Yes.
And was it previously 13.6?
Yes.
Okay, and the second question is, when you said you reconsidered the myrtle trees, which are essentially shrubs and not trees, did you choose a different variety?
Yeah, I think Navarre wrote it down on their presentation, but we decided to go with Pistachio Chinense tree, which is often seen here in the streets of Oakland.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions. Are there any other questions for members? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing. The time is 7:55. I'm going to open the public hearing. Members of the public who wish to comment on this at the public hearing will have three minutes to do so. At the end of that, I will close the public hearing and end all comment, and the members will decide and vote on this item. Public hearing is now open. Any person who wishes to speak may raise their hand to do so. Okay, we have our first commenter. Ms. Cork, are you ready with your clock?
I am.
Okay. First speaker allowed in the public hearing, Brian Donahue.
Yeah, I'd like to... The finding that these homes are, quote, "high design quality," take issue with that. And I know a little bit about what I'm speaking about, because, one, I build homes for a living. I've done so for 40 years. Two, I was a design major in college, and I received a degree from an accredited university. I know, so I'm a design expert, professional. These are not, this is not high-quality design. It's low-quality design. So I don't know, the staff needs to quantify how they determine it's high-quality design. But the biggest problem with this is not that. Another finding was made that the housing is not detrimental to the housing needs of Emeryville, but it is detrimental to the housing needs of Emeryville, because this project will not, will take a previous building that was affordable, offered affordable rents for families, into now new units that will not be affordable for families. So it's not, so it is detrimental to the housing needs of Emeryville. And this also exacerbates a very tradition we have in Emeryville whereby people...
Mr. Donahue apparently knows how to use a microphone, so I'm going to allow him to keep talking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you'd like to pull your microphone away from your shirt, we continue to listen during your time.
I'm sorry. The new, thank you for telling me that. The new, the owner of this property let the building rot, so whereby making it so that the city of Emeryville grant the new buyer permission to tear down and build the new unaffordable housing units and increase the value of the property. And so that's what happened. That's what happens all the time in Emeryville, in East Emeryville and the Triangle neighborhood. And we are encouraging this by having policies that allow for this, and it makes it so sellers can increase their profit by letting their buildings rot, by stopping maintenance of the buildings. We saw this on the 47th Street Homes. We've seen it numerous times throughout North Emeryville and East Emeryville. And we really should, we really should visit this to make it, because we're losing our affordable housing in North and East Emeryville. We need to really revisit this and make it so property owners don't get to benefit by letting their buildings rot and going without maintenance. So that's what happened here. I think you should talk about this. Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? And Sheri, did we receive any written comment cards for this item?
We did not.
Okay, the time is 7:59. I'm closing the public hearing. Haven't collected the gavel yet from you, former Mayor Martinez. She's got it sitting right there. And I will turn to members to discuss. Is there any member who wishes to discuss and add comments or input or feedback for discussion? I would just say, just to clarify the record on this particular property, that I agree with the public comment about the city being motivated to ensure and protect affordable housing in this community and to prevent there from being property owners who simply allow property to go to waste and to harm tenants. I think that there's a lot that needs to be done, actually, about that issue. And I would just note that in this particular case, the owner of this property abandoned this property after a house fire that severely damaged the front house and left this house and the entire property in a state of collective disrepair. This house became a location for squatters, who also used the back building for a number of purposes that inherently damaged and beyond repair the property. The city of Emeryville engaged in a multi-year effort to bring the property owner into compliance through code enforcement actions so that the property would be habitable and able to be rented to people in the community who would find it affordable to them. That was without success, and so it resulted in an actual legal action that the city took, which was discussed on one of the slides by staff earlier this evening, to have a trustee put in place to take over the repair and disrepair of the property. The property was determined by a court to be beyond repair and not salvageable, and through that process, the property was sold to a new property owner who is here today seeking to actually create a housing opportunity for families in the city. And this is new, safe, inhabitable housing that is being proposed. And I am grateful that the applicant listened to the feedback we provided in July and adjusted some tree varieties to better reflect the need for an urban canopy and also to ensure that we did not have vehicles parking in a sidewalk space. So those are my comments. Does anyone else wish to make a comment on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with a comment that I appreciate that the applicant was so responsive to the comments from the Planning Commission. I like that they've made some adjustments to the proposal, and so I'll move forward.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by a member Martinez to approve the resolution at the public hearing. And let me just pull my agenda back up, and would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The vote is unanimous, and the conditional use permit for this application has been approved. Thank you. We'll move now to item 11.2, which is a resolution of the City Council of the city of Emeryville approving a conditional use permit and major design review permit to demolish four residential units and replace them with four new residential units at a site that was previously approved to add additional floor area to an existing four-unit residential building located at 127164th Street with a sequoet determination of exempt. And I will turn it back over to Navarre, and I'm going to... Leo, are you going to, before you do that, Navarre, Leo, are you going to be the presenter for this item as well?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I'm going to send you back to the audience. And Navarre.
Hello again, Mayor. Hello again, Council. The applicant for this project, Travis Tar, the architect, will be presenting after me, and us will be available for any questions. And I believe both Travis Tar, the architect, and Akis Bryant are at the meeting this evening. So yes, this is a proposal at 127164th Street, so across the street from the previous project. I apologize for the background noise at my home. This is a consideration of a conditional use permit and design review proposal to construct four units and demolish four existing units at a site that was previously approved to add additional floor area. Next slide, please. So here is a site location. Next slide, please, on 64th Street. There it is, highlighted, almost directly across the street from our previous project. Next slide, please. So in December of 2016, the Planning Commission approved a use permit and design review use permit to expand the existing two-story building into a three-story building, maintaining the existing four units and to increase the two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units. And in December 2020, a building permit was issued. In May 2021, a stop work order was issued, and later in... And later in May, a notice of violation was issued. Next slide. So per the Emeryville Municipal Code, demolition of, of residential structure requires City Council approval upon the recommendation of Planning Commission. So consequently, the original project only required Planning Commission approval because it was not about demolishing existing building. But the new project requires City Council approval following the recommendation from Pl- uh, Planning Commission, just like the last project we were on. Because the project is no longer reused, it is now considered new construction. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission meeting on this in October, one speaker expressed concern about the lack of off-street parking, but it was noted by both the Planning Commission and staff that there is no parking minimums required anymore. And Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend this project to City Council. Next slide, please. So this is the same as the previous project, except it's no longer reused, as I mentioned. It's new construction. It triggers building code requirements and modifications. It does not change, uh, the FAR, um, and there's no changes to the exterior required for that, but it does require accessible parking spaces. So for planning regulations, there's no parking minimums, but the driveway is limited to single nine by ten foot, or nine to ten foot curb cut. So that would make the existing parking arrangement they had, um, infeasible because the driveway was the, for the entire length of the property. So as an alternative, the applicant is proposing no on-site parking, uh, and complete elimination of the curb cut, which creates new planning strips and on-street park, and on-street parking spots that are not, uh, that don't currently exist. Um, and the previous parking is now landscaping. Next slide, please. So, uh, other changes, there's no exceptions to standards for fence height because, uh, there's no parking in the front. There is nothing to, need to block the impacts of that parking area. And then there's modifications to windows. Staff approves minor changes to the windows after Planning Commission approval, and those are, uh, in these plans as well. Next slide, please. So at the top is an image of the building as it was in twenty fifteen. And then, in the bottom, uh, left-hand corner is the previously approved plan. And then the, uh, what's currently proposed is in the lower right-hand corner. So the main differences between the lower left and the lower right are the, uh, windows are a slightly different color. There was an issue obtaining the correct windows and materials that were previously approved, so I just want to make it clear that there was a sourcing issue that required that change. And then the fences, I said, is now reduced in height, and there's landscaping instead of parking. Next slide, please. So the zoning district is, uh, medium density residential. It's multi-unit residential. Uh, it's conditionally permitted here, and four units is consistent with that. It's in the north Hollis overlay, which does not modify, uh, permitted uses. Next slide, please. So for the general plan, it's, uh, the same as the previous application. For its medium density residential, it's in the zone of stability. The zoning is RM, and it's the north Hollis overlay. All right, next slide, please. So it's maximum FAR, it's maximum residential density, and it's maximum building height. And bonus points are not required in the RM district. And required findings for exceeding base or neighborhood compatibility, and design minimizes appearance of driveways and parking spaces, which this certainly does. Next slide, please. So for off-street parking, as I mentioned, there's no parking minimum and no parking places, uh, places are proposed. They have all been removed and replaced with open space. Next slide, please. For bicycle parking, for short-term, there's none required. There's one pro- uh, proposed space in the front of the building. And for long-term, there's, um, one space per unit required for a total of four spaces, but the applicant has eight spaces and a secured shed at the rear of the property. Next slide, please. For setbacks and open spaces, there's no changes to what was previously, uh, permitted and approved, and it complies with the setback requirements, and all open space requirements are exceeded. Um, and both of the proposed three-bedroom units on, uh, the second and third floor have over five hundred, uh, feet of private open space as well. Next slide, please. At least ten percent of the site area is required to be landscaped. This is exceeded. And the only changes are at the front of the property. So on the lower left of the screen, you can see the, uh, previous parking spaces that were approved. And then what's proposed here is a common open space, uh, at the front of the property with, uh, seating areas and, uh, area that can be used for play as well. Next slide, please. So the ground floor site plans, um, are very little changed. It's mostly accessibility requirements. So what's previously approved is on the left, what's proposed is on the right. Next slide, please. And it's, those areas are highlighted here to make it a little bit easier to see that the bathrooms basically have been enlarged. Next slide, please. The second floor site plans, there's no change. Next slide, please. And there's no change to, uh, the third floor, which has, uh, master bedrooms and, uh, open space. Next slide, please. So again, we have the previously approved slide in the upper left, and what's proposed in, uh, the lower right, uh, that, uh, pole there is the utility pole on the edge of the property, which, um, it is not required to be removed because it's on the very edge there. Next slide, please. And then just a different angle of the same thing. You can see there's a continuous landscaping, uh, strip now. What this is not showing is the trees because, uh, it would block the view of the, uh, proposed, uh, uh, building. So there would be, uh, a proposed, um, street tree as well as a, a tree in front of the building. Next slide, please. And so here's, um, this would be the west side of the building. Next slide, please. Same idea previously approved and proposed, the east side. Next slide, please. And then looking down so you can get a better view of the changes there. All right, next slide, please. And just a zoomed-in version of that front yard area. Next slide, please. So for conditional use permit findings, it has to be consistent with the general plan. Next slide, please. And the characteristics of the design must be compatible with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. That the proposed use is compatible with utilities and emergency response, and the proposed, um, project contributes to the general well-being of the community. Next slide, please. And the proposed use complies with the planning regulations. Next slide, please. For the demolition of residential structures, as we talked about in the previous application, that the applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units. In this app, uh, situation, it's four units, uh, that were previously existing, and no changes to that. Four units are, uh, proposed. And that the replacement, uh, structure, which feature design qualities, is higher and higher than the structure to be demolished, and is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. And that the elimination of the residential structure would not be material detrimental. Next slide, please. So development bonus for, uh, the medium-density residential is that the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. And that the project is designed to minimize appearance of off-street parking. Next slide, please. So for designer view, the design of the project must be consistent with the general plan and urban design goals. Next slide, please. And that it conforms to the Emeryville design guidelines. Next slide, please. And that it's of high design quality, if it's, again, compatible with the neighborhood and not adversely affected. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission staff recommend that City Council approve this project. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant, who has a presentation for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Navar. Before we move to the applicant, are there any questions for the city staff about their presentation on the information related to this application? Okay, uh, Member Donahue.
I'm curious about the bike shed. Could you bring up a slide and show where that is?
Sure, um, that would be in the presentation, Sherry, where it shows the, um, I'm pretty sure this presentation shows the rear of the property. Uh, which would also be in a rendering, so could just bring up the previous presentation and go through that. I'm sorry, I don't know the slide number right off the top of my head there. But we'll get there. We'll find it.
Okay.
Right, so definitely scroll past three's, uh, Sherry, please.
Okay, one sec. Okay, so I'm going backwards?
Yeah.
Tell me when.
Uh, okay, it's not shown very well here, but, um, go back one, I'm sorry, or forward one. So, um, Councilmember Donahue, if you look, um, it's better shown in the, um, lower rendering. At the very back, you'll see a table with chairs around it. And behind that, you'll see that it looks like the fence goes up. And what's that showing is the protected shed area. There's, um, bike racks that are vertical. They're, um, they're to, uh, provide a, we park it for eight bikes, as I said previously. All of them are vertical. It was very difficult for the applicant to figure out how to fit in bike parking with the site constraints, considering this was an existing building at the time. And, um, that is where they were able to fit it at the rear of the property. And there's also the one, um, short-term bicycle parking space at the front of the property. Did you need, did you want another, uh, image of that?
No, thank you. That, that's all I needed. Thank you very much.
Sure, no problem.
Any other members of the council in interest, uh, asking a question to staff? Okay, if not, um, Travis, I'm going to, uh, just be a lower your ganks, I see you, and you can go ahead and give your presentation.
Thank you, uh, councilmembers, and thanking Navar for such a thorough presentation. Uh, so to begin with, uh, let's move on to the second slide, which shows our, uh, a former building, uh, what was on the site previously, which was those four units. And then, uh, please go to the second, or the third slide. Uh, this is a photo of the, uh, construction progress, um, from the time of the stop-work order. And as you can see, uh, the, the entire first floor has been framed, uh, and work had progressed, started to progress on the second level. Next slide, please. This photo shows the one location that was doing things the way we instructed the builder to do, which involves the maintaining of existing framing members. Uh, in this case, the floor-ceiling-assembly structure, um, in the rear of the building. Uh, but this is the only place where it was being done. The remainder of the exterior walls and all other kind of load-bearing structural members had been replaced in the path of construction. Next slide, please. So echoing from what, uh, Navar presented, this is our former design, which included, uh, parking along the front for four spaces to maintain the existing condition. Next slide. And then here is our second, uh, our current rendering, our new iteration, with the lands, shared landscape area at the front of the, front of the property, which then returns the curb face, uh, to the streetscape. Next side, slide, please. We really do envision this new front yard, uh, to be useful for the tenants as a place place, as a gathering space, uh, to be a, also different style of, of use than the, than the rear. Probably more shared, uh, for the tenants. Um, next slide, please. The rear yard remains the same, which does have, say, the opportunity for shared use, but also is a bit more private to the ground floor units. The shared, uh, bike shed is also on this, on this slide, which we, uh, have established or called out to be a prefabricated, uh, bicycle shelter, uh, which is a metal framework with a, a nice roof. And then we call out for a, kind of, the cladding of it with a wood material to match our fence assembly. Next slide, please. As Navar noted, we do also wish to, uh, change the color of the windows and also associated metal trim and other conditions from a silver to a black tone. Uh, these windows were actually already, are purchased and are in storage right now because they were going to be installed in the building. Uh, next slide, please. And finally, uh, that summary of interior modifications to meet current building codes. Now the kitchens will have adaptable clearances, and the, um, one main bathroom is fully adaptable and is, um, several feet larger in order of all directions. And, uh, that's the extent of the presentation, and feel free to ask any questions.
Okay, if we can stop the screen share, I'd like to first call on Vice Mayor Medina for a question.
Yeah, I've got a question for the applicant. So, um, were you the one who applied for the original building permit, December fifteenth, twenty twenty?
The, uh, original building permit, um, was, I believe, submitted back in two thousand and eighteen. It was when we gained our building permit for the project.
Okay, so on December fifteenth, twenty twenty, you did have the building permit issued for the renovation of the fourplex. Was that you?
Uh, and then, I guess, on the permit that was active for the renovation of the fourplex, uh, was, was deemed in violation because the building had been demolished.
Okay, so that's my question. You are the person who applied for that per, correct?
Uh, we are the architect.
You're the architect. So this applicant is the same applicant, though?
Yes, same applicant, same architecture team.
Madam Vice Mayor, madam Vice Mayor, if you'd like to ask the applicant questions, the applicant is in the audience. I'm happy to promote the applicant if you'd like to direct-
That would be great, because, yeah, my questions are directed towards the applicant.
Okay, so we will do that. So, um, Mr. Bryant, I am, uh, promoting you to the panel, so you have the opportunity to talk. You're free to unmute yourself and answer the Vice Mayor's question. Are you there? Uh, if you can hear me, Mr. Bryant, uh, you are unmuted, but, uh, we're not hearing anything from you, which would either indicate you have a microphone that's turned off on your computer or you perhaps have headphones or something plugged into it, and you're not utilizing them, um, for the purposes of speaking at the moment. Okay, what I'd like to do is, um, afford him the opportunity to try to, if it's okay with you, Madam Vice Mayor, to try to get his technology situation, uh, figured out. The other thing you can do, Mr. Bryant, is if you'd like to phone into this meeting, it is posted on the city's website on the agenda. There is a call-in number. And if you do call in, you can simply raise your hand, and, um, I will, uh, promote you to this, uh, space to answer the Vice Mayor's question. In the interim, I'm going to see if there are other members who have questions. Okay, uh, so given what we have, uh, right now, I'm gonna, Mr. Bryant, I'm gonna move you to, uh, mute, just so we don't hear you if you do solve your problem in the middle of public comment. Uh, but this is a public hearing, and so the time is eight twenty-one. And I am opening this public hearing, and members of the public who wish to speak on this item will have three minutes to do so in the course of the public hearing. At the time that public comment is determined to be ended, the public hearing will close, and I will bring it back to members to discuss the proposed resolution for the conditional use permit for twelve seventy-one sixty-fourth street. Any members of the public wish to speak? Raise your hand now. Okay, Sherry, are you ready to begin this comment session?
Yes, let me get three minutes going on the timer.
Okay, no problem.
Go ahead.
Okay, first speaker at the public hearing will be Brian Donahue, please.
I am a contractor, built houses for a living, like this house.
Okay, Mr. Hold on a second, Mr. Donahue, hold on. Mr. Bryant, we have solved-
If you can hear me, Mr. Bryant, uh, you are unmuted, but we're not hearing anything from you, which would-
Mr. Bryant, if you can hear me, we, you have solved your mute problem. I put you on mute so that, uh, we, we've begun the public hearing. So I will unmute you and allow you to speak after the public comment is done. So please do not unmute yourself, but we cannot hear you. Um, Sherry, please reset the clock for our public speaker.
Okay, we're all set.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, please go ahead. Thank you.
So I'm a, uh, building contractor. I've built homes just like this for the last forty years. I happened to glance at these plans today, and I know that the site is constrained, or the, the proposal is constrained by building roof height, roof structure being no more than thirty feet high. Uh, but then I glanced at the plans, and I noticed that the, up on the third floor, these, the so-called scuppers, the drainage, roof drainage scuppers, these are the downspouts, the rain leaders, that, that take the roof water away, are, the top of those are at, located thirty feet above the grade. So that, so that means the roof must rise up, uh, above that to shed the water. So the way that this drawing is done, the building will have a roof higher than the, the, uh, what he's allowed to have, which is thirty feet maximum. I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be thirty-two feet, uh, six inches, because that's the height of the parapet. And, uh, so elsewhere in the drawing, the architect has a disclaimer saying the roof cannot be- And so elsewhere in the drawing, the architect has a disclaimer saying the roof cannot be higher than thirty feet. But any builder that that had a that wanted to to build it higher than that could do it by following these drawings and then you use the the dimensions on the elevation that show the scupper at thirty feet as their excuse for why they built the roof too high. And at that point, it would be too late to change. And then with the this builder, this developer, this property owner will will have pulled a fast one on us. So the drawings need to be revised to show the scuppers are not at thirty feet so that the building, the contractor can't get away with making a roof that's higher than permitted. You I've now just told the city of Emeryville this. So, you know, you've been warned this is could happen. So if it happens, it's on you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for the public comment. The next person who will be allowed to speak will be Joy Ash.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to moment to chat. I live across the street from the unit in question. And my comment is maybe not necessarily to the applicant or the the specific permit. And I think it's more so a question of the the lack of requirement for parking, off street parking. We're talking about, what, twelve bedrooms being added to this to this building? Not to mention the other property that was spoken about earlier in the evening. And that's a lot of potential cars to a street that is already overpopulated. And when I brought this up in the building commission meeting, I was quickly, you know, the wasn't, I was heard but not heard at the same time in that the not having the carve out for the driveway for the off street parking is actually safer because people are going to trip over it, yada, yada, yada. You know, I have two very young children. The street is full of very young children. And when I have to park a block and a half away at night, it doesn't feel safe. It's definitely not convenient. And so I would I would ask that that be considered at some point or I would like information on how to look into turning our street into a permitted parking street. There are many units on our street that have four or more cars. And it's just not, there's just not that much off street parking. And so this this whole process, I feel like the streets and the neighborhood have, you know, voiced opinions and then, you know, they're listened to a little bit. But we're, you know, we are accommodating things that we don't necessarily want, like the third story on this unit, having it be so high. Those are things that we brought up in the past and they're still happening. And but so here's yet another issue that a lot of the neighbors on the streets are concerned about. And it it doesn't sound like it's going to be revised. And I totally understand that there's not a required parking that is new to the permit process. But it in my opinion is something that needs to be considered again. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Bryant in the audience. I'm going to, Mr. Bryant, I've moved you to allow you to talk. Let me ask you, you can unmute yourself. Do you wish to make a public comment or would you like me to close the public comment and then you can answer the vice mayor's question?
Yeah, I was trying to answer the vice mayor's question. Actually, I would really like to have parking, but it just wasn't feasible.
Mr. Bryant, hold on one moment. I'm in a public hearing, so you're going to get a chance to do that. But let me first do what I need to do on my process, which is, are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this application before I close the public comment portion of the public hearing? Okay, Sherry, did we receive any written comments on this item?
We did not.
Okay, the time is eight twenty eight. The public hearing is closed. We'll turn to discussion and I'd like to offer Mr. Bryant the opportunity to respond to the vice mayor.
Let me reiterate my question because it's been a few minutes. My question is, are you the applicant who received a building permit on December fifteenth, twenty twenty that then had a stop work issued order?
And can you hear me?
We can now. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, actually, it was a licensed contractor. So I normally do owner builder, but on this project, I hired and paid a licensed contractor and he pulled the permit and he made the errors that got the stop work order. It had nothing to do with me.
So he demolished buildings without you knowing about that?
He demolished the bill. I kind of seen certain things, but it wasn't like I was there every day. So I would, you know, because I I flip houses for a living. So I let him take care of that one. And I had a property in Rock Ridge and I had another one in in West Oakland, another one in Richmond that I was kind of working on. So I let him take, you know, charge of that one thinking I had in the bag is I'm paying such a premium. And it ended up just, man, I'm just so upset about this because it's costing me so much more money. But, yeah, he basically did this on his own, without my knowledge, without my permission, without my consent and to save himself money, you know, because the agreement that we had, I'm paying for material and he's paying for labor. So in order for him to sister all the studs, it would take him a lot more time to put them in between each one. So he took it upon himself to demo the building and save himself some time and and make me pay more material.
I have a follow up question. So this has been demonstrative of your level of oversight of the work thus far. And you are seeking another permit from us tonight to continue with this demolition. Is this how you will oversee this project moving forward?
I hired a contractor, so really I'm just the owner investor. But now I'm going to be there a lot more or try to, you know, now that I see I can't trust them. You know, I figured that since I'm hiring a licensed individual that has state credentials and this and that, you know, that that's more savvy at reading plans than I am. You know what I mean? It wouldn't be an issue. But now I see that I have to hire somebody to watch somebody else I'm hiring. I didn't really think that it would it would take that, honestly.
Okay, and once you're claiming this was done without your knowledge, did you file a complaint with the state licensing board?
Well, I actually was waiting, but I I have planned to do a lawsuit. But I'm actually waiting to kind of get all the, as I talked to my attorney, basically get all of the, get everything set in stone that it's going to cost me to get this thing back on track and then go from there. But, yeah, I'm I'm planning on because it's I I'm calculating the money. It's like this, it's a lot of, it's costing me a lot of money, man.
So it's been a year and you have no evidence of any proof that this contractor, that you are seeking a claim or a lawsuit against a contractor?
I have like, I have some years in order to do that. It hasn't been a year since the stop work order, but it's been like eight, seven months or something like that. And, yeah, I mean, you know, I have time to do it, you know what I mean? So I'm just waiting to get everything back, you know, seeing seeing the total amount of damages that it's going to take to get everything back on track. So that it's not even, we're not even to that point yet. You know what I mean? We're still like, I'm still paying bills and getting everything going before I can really just start it.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, are there any other members of the council who have questions for the applicant or his architect before I dismiss them from the panel? Okay, I'm going to move our two temporary guests back to the audience. All right, and I'm going to turn to members for discussion. I have several items and I will just let members know before they make their comments if they wish. I I'm actually proposing additional conditions of approval tonight for us to consider that I have researched and discussed with city staff. And I will talk about those after my colleagues have spoken. But I just want to flag that for members if they want to present their comments first. Member Donahue?
That this property has no parking would seem to me natural for a very strong bicycle orientation for the the future tenants. And the the bike shed is underwhelming. You know, storing bikes vertical means that, say, a family would not be able to have an electric cargo bike, for example, which a lot of families can survive with and not have a car. But the property isn't really providing for that. You know, this is an opportunity for a better use of bicycling as the the main mode of transportation other than walking. And it just seems like, you know, the the project needs to be rethought with that lifestyle in mind. So that's my my general comment about it.
Thank you. Any other members wish to provide comments? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I have serious concerns about this applicant acting in exchange, honestly. They have already violated in terms of their building permit. They have told us a story about a contractor going rogue, but not substantiated in any way, shape or form. And so I am concerned about being able to make a finding that there would be no adverse impact to the city or this neighborhood should they continue to ignore the terms of any permit that we award them. In addition, like I am interested in a public comment from Brian Donahue about the building design not appearing to be in compliance. Like that is a matter of concern because it appears there to be an issue of compliance with building standards with this applicant. So I think we should seriously think about how to make sure if we are going to allow a conditional approval, how those conditions can be stringent.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to make comments? Members Martinez or Welch, you're holding off right now. Okay, so I have a couple of comments of my own. So this is this particular application, I I agree with member Medina. This particular application is troubling to me. I was on the planning commission in twenty fifteen and sixteen when this application came before us. And at that time, the property owner, who is the same property owner we have before us today, evicted four low income families, including section eight family members at the week before Christmas. And all the residents in the neighborhood came out to that planning commission meeting very upset. And that's not a planning commission consideration. Whether or not a person is evicted is not subject to the planning regulations. However, the 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 issue was that the applicant at that time demolished the interior of the structure and went ahead, beginning with demolition on the inside and gutted the units without any permits at that time. So in twenty sixteen, there was an unapproved effort to begin substantial construction, a reconstruction on the project that required bringing the applicant before us. And I was there at the August twenty fifth, twenty sixteen meeting and I spent some time reviewing the videotape from that planning commission meeting to see what the concerns of the community were then and what the comments of the planning commission were then. And there were concerns that were raised again today with the height of the building, the ability of the building to be thirty feet. Jim Martin, who lives across the street from this property or did at least, came to that planning commission meeting. He's a former member of the commission, I believe. And he spoke to us about the ability to have three levels of housing with eight foot ceiling clearances and have two feet between each floor and also to have a building that's already being built on its existing foundation, which is above the ground level. And so whether or not that would actually exceed the thirty foot limit, as was noted by the public commenter this evening and whether or not we actually need to have a variance because the zoning area for this section of town allows for a building up to fifty five feet, but a variance has to be applied for by the applicant. And the applicant has averred and staff have accepted, I think, at face value, the applicant's verments that the building can be constructed up to thirty feet. But as the vice mayor has noted and I have experienced now as a planning commissioner and again as a city council member, the applicant and in the applicant's own words, in fact, the applicant has not provided sufficient oversight or guidance. And being an investor in real property is a person's right. And I don't begrudge somebody their decision to buy or purchase or flip homes. That's that's not really the purview of this body. However, doing that requires that you comply with municipal standards and practices. And in this case, there was demolition done to the interior of units that displaced people who were long term residents of our community, who could still have occupied that building until today, in fact. And in the interim, there was a a project submitted that was approved back in December of twenty sixteen. And there were some additional approvals in twenty eighteen and then a building permit was issued in December of twenty twenty to allow for the development of this site using the existing structure. And I understand that there may be a legal issue between the applicant and his contractor. But the reality is that the entire structure was demolished and a new construction was built without any permit for a new construction. It was supposed to be a remodel. And so we have now twice in a five year period had that experience. And there aren't really satisfying consequences for that. So this is a person who is the ability to make money off of this practice, who is not a person who is going to be affected as the neighbor with this construction and the giant empty shell of a building that existed there for years is not the person who was displaced from their neighborhood and community by illegal demolition actions. And so I spent a little time looking into what remedies exist for us in the planning context because the sub proposal does largely, I think, with the staff's recommendation as to as to these design features, it does largely comply with the standards that we are required to review for permissions. But there's a couple of things I would like us to discuss further. First, our our master fee schedule. Actually, on page four of our master fee schedule, there is a provision that says, and we'll quote it, construction work without a required permit. If you do a construction work without a required permit, the fee is, quote, five times the cost of the actual permit. So I consulted with staff today and the building fees, the building permit fees for a building permit, an electrical permit, applying permit and the mechanical permit, those total on the fee sheet ten thousand two hundred and forty one dollars and seventy seven cents. So one of the conditions I would recommend to the council is that we quintuple that permit fee and that the fee for that section of fees becomes fifty one thousand dollars, fifty one thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty five cents, which added to the remaining twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and five cents would make a new fee schedule of sixty four thousand one hundred and thirty five dollars and ninety cents that the applicant would have to pay in order to have their permits issued to them. And second, I I my comments at the planning commission, when I did the very detailed design review back in the day and this application is largely in keeping with that, my comments back then were that my concern was related to the ability to actually construct this building at thirty feet and comply with all of the other relevant design guidelines. So this building is currently at exactly a one point O F A R. It's four thousand two hundred and seventy three square feet and its maximum allowance is four thousand two hundred and eighty. It's three feet. It towers over a one story house to the to the adjacent to it. And there is no setback for the third floor from the sides of the house, just from the street. And so basically, the applicant is seeking to maximize the developable envelope to deliver housing. And I think member Donahue's comment about the inadequacy of the bike parking is a reflection of the fact that the applicant has chosen to prioritize the development of the the structure itself and its size. And I think there is a legitimate reason to be concerned, given that the applicant himself has told us he has not put adequate oversight into this. We've had multiple problems with this application and this this property. And the neighbors are, I think, rightfully tired of dealing with this proposal and this applicant. There's a rightful reluctance to support this. So I'm also recommending tonight that there be a new condition of approval. And that condition of approval, I believe, should require that prior to the issuance of a certificate, any certificate of occupancy, the applicant should be required to provide verification of the height of all as built structures on the property by the city engineer or its designee at the applicant's sole cost and expense. And I'll share this on screen in a moment for text purposes. But essentially, I think that the applicant should hear from us very clearly that you have a right to build up to thirty feet. If you build over thirty feet, at the end of your construction, we are going to be able to select either our city engineer or someone that we choose at your cost to come out and actually confirm that your building is thirty feet or less. And if it's not, you will not be allowed to occupy your building until you actually bring it into compliance, which will either require you to demolish your structure or apply for a variance that complies with the city's regulations. And maybe that would be an incentive to have the applicant be a more responsible home flipper and developer in our community, which is not interested in continuing a charade like this. So those are my two suggestions. And if there's interest in those, I will share a screen so we can discuss that language. I want to thank the city attorney in particular for assisting me in crafting this today to make sure I had something available to discuss. But I'm interested in hearing what my colleagues have to say about this application and my suggestions. Anyone? And I'm going to first allow Mr. Bryant to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing of what you just said, which is about the height variance. A height variance is not an option in Emeryville because our height limits are baked into our general plan and you can't violate the general plan. So there's no such thing as a height variance in Emeryville.
You can't build a fifty five feet on this this zone, is what you're saying?
Thirty feet is the maximum and there's no variance from that.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. So if they go over thirty feet, they just can't occupy it?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. Member Donahue?
I like your direction with this shot.
Okay, thank you. Member Martinez?
I'll agree with that. I I was struggling with a way to quantify how to get this type of owner into compliance. And so I appreciate the work of the mayor and our city attorney for thinking of this issue and ways that we can solve for this. issue and ways that we can solve for this and to prevent it from happening in the future.
Thank you. Member Welch is a thumbs up. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I'm supportive of your recommendations.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, awkward as it may be, I'd like to share screen for the purposes of this record. And what the council members will see before them is my proposed recommendations, and I'm happy to wordsmith or edit this. So we would be adding a condition of approval to Roman numeral two, C5, which is prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall be required to provide verification of the height of all as-built structures in the project by the city engineer or designee at the applicant's sole cost and expense, which would require them to then, through us, select somebody who would confirm that the building is height compliant before they can actually occupy the building. And then two B three would be added, which is prior to issuance of a building permit, the community development director shall confirm that the applicant has paid five times the cost of the building permit fee in accordance with the city's master fee schedule, Building Division, which requires such payment for construction work without permits. And then there would be a new whereas clause, which would be seventh on the list in our resolution today, which states that whereas the project is the result of unpermitted demolition and the city's master fee schedule requires payment of five times the amount of the permit fee for construction work completed without permits, so the project will be required to pay fees of five times the amount of the building permit fees, parenthetical, building permit fee, electrical permit fee, plumbing permit fee, and mechanical permit fee required for the project. Are there any recommended changes or questions or suggestions related to this language?
Mayor Bowers?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. I believe the community development director had suggested that the word project at the very end of the recital should be demolition.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around, that we were changing it from demolition to, but you wanted demolition. We will change that right now. That's the correction?
Sorry, I'm not seeing.
Oh, you don't see my?
Can we clarify that? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that the quintuple fees are applicable to the whole project.
Well, this is not, this is the fees that I was provided with from the schedule. It's not actually all the fees. It's the ones related to the building permit.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you are correct. It should be project.
Okay, I thought it was changed to project. Yes. Okay. Yep, we were expanding beyond demolition to the project as whole. Okay, that's fine. That's why we all have each other here, right? Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment or suggestion? Can I take the shared screen down, or do folks need to still read this?
Mayor Bowers, I'm not sure if other people were seeing your shared screen, but it was not showing up for me here in the chambers.
Oh, is that because it's only being viewed by panelists?
I'm not sure. Did everybody else on on the call see this shared screen?
Yes.
Okay. Well, not sure why it wasn't showing here.
Let me ask Mr. Bryant, who is in the audience, if he could see it. Mr. Bryant, could you see it?
Yes, I could see it. And I also have one other clarification.
Okay.
First of all, it's correct that word should be project, not demolition. Secondly, I would like to have a final confirmation of this five times fee by the building division because I'm not personally familiar with exactly how they do this. They have, I know they've done this in the past in other projects. I'm not 100% sure, for example, whether the plan review fees should be included in that five times calculation or not. I know that the four building permit types that you mentioned should definitely be included. I'm not sure if those plan check fees or other fees should be included in that five time calculation. So if we can put some wording in this whereas that says, you know, subject to confirmation by the building division and consistent with the city's practice or something like that.
Yeah, I just have a question about the the fee sheet then. And I would be curious, the the fee sheet, that's the all the fees that have to be paid to get a permit at all, right?
Right. But getting a building permit is a two step process. First, there's plan review. You submit your building permit application, and that goes through plan review. And then once the plans are approved, then you pay your building permit fees, and then you get your permit. So whether those first plan review fees are included in the five time calculation or not, I'm not 100% sure.
Right. So all the other fees, like the fire safety fee and the transportation fee, all of those are required to issue a permit. And the master fee schedule doesn't say building permit. It actually just says five times the fee of the permit, which makes me believe it's the entire permit calendar schedule because it's a it's a collective set of fees. And I'm just, I actually believe it should be the full set of fees. But the guidance I had received earlier was that this is the this is the subset. I'm actually inclined to actually then authorize five times the full fee and allow that to be reduced if the building division says that those are not actual fees for some reason.
Well, that would work. I will say the general plan maintenance fee, for example, is based on construction valuation, and we have an ordinance that sets that fee. And I don't believe we would have the authority to increase that by five times. There's also the Building Standards Commission fee, and that's a fee that's set by the state. It's a pass through fee. We just give it straight to the state. So I don't see a particular reason to increase that one. So, you know, we have to look at each fee and see what the basis for it is. I have no doubt that those permit fees that explicitly say permit are included in the increase. I'm just not 100% sure about the others.
I understand. Thank you. Madam City Manager?
A suggestion, obviously defer to the city attorney, but all eligible fees or all fees eligible for quintupling?
That seems like a very reasonable suggestion. Madam City Attorney, how do you feel about that?
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
So I'm going to do this one more time, and I appreciate my colleagues' indulgence as we make sure we get this correct. So what I'm looking at here is I would, in this section, we would change has paid five times the cost of all eligible permit fees, because the the master fee schedule refers to those permit fees. Okay? And then down here, we would change five times the amount of all eligible permit fees for construction work completed without permits. So the project will be required to pay fees of five times the amount of the?
Eligible fees?
Madam City Attorney, do you approve of that language?
Yes, approved as before.
Okay. Council members, do you have any further comments on this proposed language?
What's with the dangling and after project?
It's because it goes to now be a further resolved.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no more comments, I'm going to stop the share and ask, are there any members who would like to make a motion that includes those recommendations?
Happy to make a motion with those recommendations.
Amendments, okay.
Happy to second.
Okay, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by a member Welch to approve this resolution with those amendments. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, the amended resolution has been approved for the conditional use permit with those terms. Thank you, members. We will now move to agenda item 12.1, which is a proposed 2022 state and federal legislative agenda and the summary of 2021 outcomes. And I am going to promote our friend, Mr. DeLuca from Towns and Public Affairs, and invite him to join us up here. And good evening, sir.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, good evening and happy holidays. As you know, I am Nicolau DeLuca. I'm a vice president at Towns and Public Affairs, and we have the honor of representing the city in both Sacramento and Washington DC. To Councilmember Welch, I look forward to working with you also. And so tonight, before you, is the draft 2022 legislative platform for the city for discussion and then adoption. This is something that we do each year around this time. And as you know, the platform will reflect the priorities of the city council and includes advocating for legislation, regulations, and funding that is consistent with the city's adopted goals. Once adopted, we share this document with key stakeholders, the state legislature, governor's office, as well as Congress and the Biden administration. Of course, it will be necessary to remain nimble as we move through this legislative year. Our agenda will be fluid, and some issues will be addressed and other issues will be added. And then also, in addition to the legislative platform, this report also highlights some of the massive funding and legislative wins that the city and TPA team worked on with the strong support from our state and federal delegation. So for 2022, the following legislative priorities are being recommended for monitoring, analysis, and potential action. City council can choose to take a position on a piece of legislation, continue to monitor it without a position, or determine if any further response is required. Of course, we maintain a list of bills that we've taken positions on and happy to present to the council in rolling updates. So the following areas that we're recommending, and of course, please give us your feedback, and we can make any changes. The priority issues to watch and work on for the city include homelessness, housing, economic development, infrastructure, health, public safety, sustainability in the environment, and then miscellaneous. So quickly to wrap it up, another great year in Sacramento with a massive legislative win for intergenerational housing. And I really want to tip my cap to Mayor Bowers for all of his awesome work on that bill, which was just, it was such an honor working on that one. And then working with Senator Skinner and then Mayor Martinez, we helped get the city a direct allocation or an earmark of 2.5 million for site remediation, the former courtyard to prepare the site for an affordable housing project. Going across the nation over in DC, we have two federal earmarks pending, one from Congresswoman Barbara Lee for 2 million, also for the courtyard site cleanup. And then Senator Dianne Feinstein put forward a request for the 40th Street redesign in the amount of $1 million. All those earmarks are still pending based on final federal action, which we will have an update soon as to when that will happen. So with that said, I will stop talking. I will answer any questions you have, and thank you very much, as always, for your time.
Very welcome. Do you members, we will have a discussion about potential legislative options after the public comment, but is there a question for Nicolau about existing items? Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in the work that we did together, Nicolau, over the the last couple of years, I learned that our legislators appetite for member request consideration mostly surrounded infrastructure, which, you know, can be directly tied to what our federal government and state government are investing in. But I'm curious, is there possibly going to be an opportunity for something less sexy, like the fact that our small city has not, has not quite recovered from the the economic effects of COVID-19 and the fact that our a one time investment in our city would really help us get over that hump that we're experiencing with the loss of our hotel taxes?
Councilmember Martinez, great question. There definitely is a propensity for infrastructure funding requests because this is really one time funding.
Yeah.
And from the surplus, and also, last year was just such an anomaly. If you all remember, around this time, the state was looking at a massive deficit, and then the second quarter came, they had a huge surplus. So a lot of what the state wants to do is get that funding out as fast as can be, and infrastructure works because it's one time funding and also helps with job creation. Be that as it may, we met with Senator Skinner last week, and it sounds like there is an appetite for additional COVID recovery, potentially small business loans, potentially small business grants, things of that nature. The state legislature, the governor's going to introduce his budget January 10th, and then everything starts for the the work and the negotiations back and forth. I am happy to, and we recommend, we make an ask to the state. And as we've done in years past, it's been successful. As you know, we put in options. We have a menu of of potential options. And I think we should definitely include some type of COVID relief or COVID support. We were working additionally last year, or the earlier part of this year, sorry, on some type of support to the city for backfilling, whether it's the hotel tax or just loss of revenue. And the overall feeling from the state was, not knowing how big COVID would be, was, hey, that federal aid was coming, city got a portion through the county, feds are doing that, let's do our thing. However, it's clear with Omicron and others, this isn't going away. So a long winded way of saying, by all means, let's do a letter to their state delegation, and let's include infrastructure and programmatic and include some type of COVID response.
Yeah. COVID COVID relief to our bottom line would be really helpful, even if we don't get it. I'd love for it to be on the menu.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that we're asking questions and not going into all of our asks, so I can entertain the public comment before we discuss further. So do you have a question, Member Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there any, is there anything that would support the infrastructure of building public parks, given an increase in housing density?
Yes. From going through the, walking out, going through past earmarks in June and July, there was a handful that went to park projects. And so primarily greater efficiency in this, on the state side for that, less on the federal side, because the D head bill gets oversubscribed. But yes, park funding is definitely an eligible ask for a member request slash earmark, and that's definitely something we could add to our member letter menu also.
Thank you for that information.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to open this first to public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item will have three minutes to do so. Sherri, did we receive any written comment cards for this item?
We did not.
Okay, last call for hands. Okay, seeing no hands on this item, I will close the public comment section for this agenda item and move it to discussion. Members, you have in front of you the the priorities, as was mentioned by, okay, Mr. Bukowski, I'm sure you were waiting for this item and you ran back to your computer. So I'm going to reopen the public comment to accommodate our raised hand on this item. And unfortunately, Mr. Bukowski, Zoom is telling me I cannot allow you to speak because you're using a very old version of Zoom. I can promote you to a panelist, so you're going to get an extreme privilege, and I'm going to ask you to update your Zoom after this meeting. Okay, you can unmute yourself, Ken. Sherri, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Ken. Go ahead.
Okay. Is there any provision for value recapture in the upcoming legislative session?
Do you have other comments or questions so that we can have him answer them all at one time?
No, that's it.
Okay. So thank you for your public comment and. Send you back to the audience. Nicolau, if you would just write that down, we'll get to that after public comment.
I actually did not. I wasn't able to hear that.
Is there anything for value capture in the provisions for the plan? Okay. And I'll promote Brian Donahue to speak. You have three minutes.
Okay, this is just a test because you allowed Ken Bukowski to speak after you closed the public hearing. I just decided to test to see if you would allow equal treatment, and I'm happy to report you are allowing it, and I don't have any more further comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing Nicolau, I'll begin by asking if you'd like to respond to the public comment question.
As it relates to value capture, I don't have an answer, but happy to look into that. And then one other item on the draft ledge platform, the staff report, it was on page five is a strategy we're recommending when we do our earmark letter to do buckets. And the buckets are affordable housing, homelessness, infrastructure improvements, and then climate resiliency. Again, all suggestions, but they're happy to definitely add some type of response, as Councilmember Martinez said, some type of backfill, or I'll work with the city manager on better phrasing for that, but some type of ways to fill revenue loss.
Okay. Do other members have comments? I have one item. Member Vice Mayor Medina?
I think under infrastructure, or sorry, under public safety, I love that you've included the automated speed enforcement, very disappointed with what happened to that bill in the cycle. But I'd also like to include that we support the decriminalization of jaywalking.
Absolutely. Adding that now.
Bad death of legislation this year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And perhaps if everyone also agrees with me, under infrastructure, it could be support funding for, for e-bikes that is not income restricted. There's 10 million in the pot to help Californians purchase e-bikes, which is not very much, and it's income restricted to 80% of AMI, I think. Whereas for EVs, you can make up to $150,000 a year and get an electric vehicle with like a California tax rebate. That doesn't sit well with me.
Do we have support for that being added to the platform? A thumbs up. Need a majority of support to add that to the platform. Okay? Do others have items? I have one big one, and I'm prepared to roll up my sleeves and do some lobbying of my own with you, Brosef, which is, I really think that on the, a combination of infrastructure and climate resiliency, I really would like to see the state with $31 billion in anticipated surplus, which, after making no investments in transportation this past year, I really think that the vision for funding the 40th Street redesign is transformative, and we are represented by the Senate Budget Chair, and she is in her last term in office. And I think it would be transformative for us to step out and get the funding we need to fully build. We have most of the design money, but fully build the 40th Street multimodal plan for transit-only lanes and a separated cycle track that connects people from jobs to transit to the Bay and its resources. And that is an economic plan, that is a transit and safety plan, and that is a climate resiliency plan. So if there's a majority of support, I would really like us to go back to 40th Street, which everyone knows is my favorite street to fight for. We got a majority of support, thumbs up? Okay, so Nicolau, if we could add that to asks, and I think with the council's support for that, I'd like to talk to you some more about how we might be able to accomplish such a significant lift this year.
Absolutely. Just for clarification, so for the construction, not the design, for the construction, correct?
Right, yeah, we are almost fully funded on the design, and the goal would be to get an earmark that gives us the construction money so this project can move quickly into its envisioned next phase. And that is a project of this size. In terms of cost, for a small city, can take a long year to cobble the money together, and it would become continuously expensive for us. But this really gives us a chance to envision a different, a different future for our community. And I think that if we can get some support from the state with the money that's sitting around after the surplus here, that would be great for us.
Sounds good.
I also just want to report to my colleagues that I received a request from Representative Ash Colra to support universal healthcare, which we already gave a policy platform position on in the prior iteration of the, prior year of session. So this bill is already out there, AB Assembly Bill 1400, was asked to sign a new letter as the bill is going to go to Health Committee in January. And so I just wanted to let folks know that I will be doing that in further and so have your prior direction to do that. I want to put a plug in for what Member Medina said. I also think we, if we support, I think we should support the Idaho Stop and Delaware Yield Bill, which I think will come back. So this would allow us to create a more bike-friendly community around stop signs. There's some majority of support for that. And then David Chu left a bill related to speeding enforcement opportunities and allowing us to do some stuff on bike lanes. And I want to see if folks want to have a discussion about that.
Nicolau already got that in there.
Did we already take a position on that bill?
Yeah, I put that in the...
Okay.
That's automated speed enforcement.
Automated speed so that we...
Don, you know, there's nothing I'm more viscerally angry about than that one die this year.
Well, it has a chance of coming back. I had a very long talk with Laura Friedman about this in Scotland, and so we will work on that still. Okay, are there any other items that folks would like to add to the legislative priority list? Nicolau, are there any other questions you'd like to ask us while you're visiting us today?
No, I just appreciate you all. You're a great council and city to work with. You make it fun. You all work with me, so shoulder to shoulder. So I appreciate it. So happy holidays to all. What I will do is make these changes, send the final version to the city manager for her once-over. We'll finalize it, we'll have a ledge platform, and frankly, we'll get ready to rock like we always do.
Oh, wait, sorry, Diane? Did we have an item for community services that we wanted to talk to Nicolau about?
No, we're handling that offline.
Gotcha.
Well, they say fun things come in small packages, and there are very few things smaller than the city of Emeryville.
Small but mighty.
Small but mighty, as I like to say. So we can be small, in parentheses, and fun, but mighty. So thank you, Nicolau, for being here. I look forward to seeing you in Sacramento soon, and enjoy your holidays with your family and your two little Tasmanian devils, who are a total delight, and we will talk to you in the new year.
Appreciate it. Take it easy, everyone. Thank you very much.
All right, see you later. Okay, that will bring us to item 12.2, which has three subparts. This is the paid parking program. And Madam City Manager, can you just let me know, are we going to take these up as individual items? Or will you present all of them and we'll just take separate actions on them?
Ms. Evans is making a presentation on the full package, and then each resolution would require a vote. So I believe Amber, you have a short presentation this evening?
I have a very short presentation to share with you, Mayor and council members.
Welcome.
Coming up right now. As the council knows, I'm Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator with the city, and I think I had a phase thing, and hopefully it will stop. Next slide, please. We're going to talk about paid parking, as you alluded to, with three actions. And those three actions, and I'll each, I'll have a slide for each of these, go through real quick. Accepting paid parking project as complete. So a momentous night in 2021 through COVID, paid parking was installed, operation begun, and now we're going to ACTC to say, here's our final report, and everything's in. The revised parking meter locations that were brought to the transportation committees, and these are just two blocks, 67th and Adeline, and then designating limited-time parking at 3986 Adeline. That's the Patata's Restaurant for later in the evening. Next slide, please. The first action, accepting the project as complete, I just wanted to call to your attention of the scope of the project. There were 58 kiosks, 26 meters, over 300 signs, 3,600 linear feet of paint. And this is a program that was expanded to the triangle, is inclusive of North Hollis in the commercial districts and the mixed use, and covers about 450 parking spaces. Next slide. And I will say that the acceptance of completion is a requirement of the ACTC funding, which we received for this project, $1 million in costs, 77% of that covered by ACTC. The revised parking meter locations on 67th and Adeline were brought to the Transportation Commission, Committee, excuse me, in January and March of this year. And they were brought both by a business and residence alternately. And on the case of 67th, another business endorsed making the changes. So like-for-like parking was moved from mid-block north side to right at the corner on the south side. And then we had found that we had really, in our mission of the policy intent of sticking to commercial mixed-use areas, had proposed meters in front of residents. And when those residents brought that to the Transportation Commission Committee, recommendations were made to make both those changes. And that is revisions to the resolution and the specific language about it, which is why it's pulled out separately. For your third item, on the next slide, please, which is regarding a designating of time-limited parking for Patata's Restaurant at 3986 for extended time of period. And the business owner there was asking for the 15 minutes that we will charge for parking in front of the business from 9:00 to 5:00, consistent with the ordinance, but they wanted to continue that unpaid from 5:00 to 8:00. And the Transportation Committee also recommended this for approval. Next slide, please. With your acceptance, if you were to accept all three of those items, we would finalize our reporting to Alameda County and close the account, and then we would continue with our operations. And a couple of presentations that are expected to be made in the spring when we've completed a year of operations will be to the Public Safety Committee and the Budget and Governance Committee. Of course, we will continue to do data collection. This project was certainly an interesting time to roll out during COVID-19, and we will continue to collect data as operations may normalize as we emerge from the pandemic. Thank you, and that's all I have to present tonight.
Thank you, Amber.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I might just interject one note to close that out. Is a note of deep appreciation to Ms. Evans for not only taking this project on at its inception, which was before I got here, but continuing through to implementation, which I think is not anything she ever anticipated when this project got started. And I just want to thank her for her continued commitment to it with our short staffing and appreciate all that she and the team have been able to accomplish to have paid parking. So thank you for indulging me.
You're very welcome. Are there any members of, well, let me actually start by also extending my deep gratitude and appreciation to Ms. Evans because I remember when, as many of us do, when we started this discussion in 2017 on the paid parking program, and as the representative to ACTC going and getting that last $1 million of funding, and then a very significant amount of public input on the design of this plan and its implementation, and lots of questions from people about it. And we even heard some in an earlier item this evening. I'll be responding to that resident with how they can get in touch with you, Amber, resident designated sections. But I just want to thank you for your work on this and see if any of my colleagues have staff-level presentation questions about the closing out this program. No? Okay, so at this time, I will open this item for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Donahue, you have a question?
Well, if, you know, it's, maybe you don't have the data for it, but have we seen parking enforcement yield? Do we have the necessary staff to cover our city with the kinds of enforcement that even where we don't have paid parking? Has this worked out? In other words, where did... Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to the Vice Mayor, to the Councilmember Donahue. We will be giving you a more robust analysis of the parking enforcement program, as Ms. Evans mentioned, after the first of the year. We'll be bringing that back to public safety. But I will say, almost anecdotally, just having two designated parking enforcement officers has been, made a huge change in terms of our ability to enforce, as I think we reported to the Public Safety Committee at its last meeting. They've issued over 5,000 citations since inception of the program and have been able to provide corollary services such as drop-off enforcement around Emory Unified in the morning, which I think has had some positive impact there as well. But we will provide you a more nuanced and robust analysis of that after the completion of the first year of the program.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'll open this for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item will have three minutes to do so. Sherri, did we receive any written comment cards?
No comment cards.
Okay, and turning to public comment, we have Brian Donahue.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just clarify that you are taking public comment on items, all of the sub-items under 12.2, correct?
I am. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. All of 12.2, since we had one presentation, we have one period for public comment. And Mr. Donahue, you have three minutes.
So I guess I just heard over 5,000 citations, parking citations issued, but none for blocking bike lanes. Very interesting. Bike lane, blocking bike lanes, parking illegally by blocking bike lanes is not taken seriously by the city of Emeryville. I wish it was. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, the public comment is closed, and I'll bring this back for discussion. Members, is there anything that you'd like to discuss about any of the three items we have before us to take action on this evening? Okay, seeing, oh, you have a comment? Vice Mayor Medina?
I was going to move.
Okay, so item 12.2.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville accepting the paid parking project as complete. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the resolution is approved. Item 12.2.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville revising the locations of parking meters in the North Hollis and Triangle parking meter zones. Sequent determination is exempt. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the resolution is approved. Item 12.2.3 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville designating a 15-minute time-limited parking zone adjacent to 3986 Adeline Street. Sequent determination is exempt. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the resolution is approved. That closes item 12.2. Thank you, Ms. Evans. It will move to item 12.3, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the 2021 regular meeting schedule of the Emeryville City Council to add a meeting in January 22. And this is consistent with the action we took earlier this evening at the Mesa meeting. There's no staff presentation for this item, so I'm going to ask if there's any public comment on the proposed meeting calendar for 2022. Seeing no public comment for this item, I'll turn to members to discuss. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to set a meeting on January 4th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Member Martinez, a second by Member Welch to set a meeting for the City Council, a special meeting on January 4th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, the calendar is approved. Thank you. Item 13 is department head reports. And let me pull back Mr. Bryant. And our planning director, our community development director, would you like to report out?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bouters and members of the City Council. This is my regular report on the most recent Planning Commission meeting, which occurred on Thursday, December 9th. There were three items on the Planning Commission's agenda as listed here on your agenda. First was a public hearing on the proposed 24-unit residential project at 1225 65th Street. I will note that Commissioner Chafe was recused on this item because of the proximity of her residence. And the other commissioners, the other six commissioners, approved this project unanimously. This, there is a 15-day period during which this approval may be appealed to the City Council. That 15-day period ends on Friday, December 24th, which this year is a city holiday. Therefore, the appeal period is extended to the following business day, which would be Monday, December 27th at 4:00 PM. And of course, if the City Council wishes to appeal this item to yourselves, this would be your opportunity to do so. The other two items were study sessions. The first was a conversion of a single-family home to a duplex with additional floor area at 1291 55th Street, which the commission heard and made some comments on. And the second was a proposed master sign program for the Emory, which is the new name for the Sherwin-Williams project. And again, the commission had a presentation and made some comments on that as well. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions about the items that were presented by the Community Development Director? And are there any, there is one item that's subject to our opportunity for appeal as a council? Does anybody wish to appeal that item? Okay, seeing none. Are there any other department head reports this evening, Madam City Manager? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bryant, for your time. And we will close item 13 and move to item 14, which is the future agenda items of the City Council. And I will begin by asking Member Welch, do you have any future agenda items at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay, Vice Mayor Medina, welcome. Vice Mayor Medina? Member Martinez?
No.
Okay, Mr. Donahue?
I think we should consider having a city ethics code like Elizabeth Montgomery suggested. I looked at several of them, and... I looked at several of them, and one from Sunnyvale seemed relatively simple and good. I think it'd be a worthy item to have at a future agenda.
Is there support for there to be a discussion about an ethics code for the city? I would like to make a suggestion if there is a support for that, but I just want to first poll, do people wish to have a discussion on that? Without discussing the subject, members who wish to comment or question can do so. Anyone?
I will support that discussion.
I'm happy to support that discussion too, but I would like to ask that it goes to the Budget and Governance Committee, because the Governance Committee is responsible for reviewing city policies and making recommendations to the City Council. Is that supportive? Are you supportive of that, Member Donahue?
Sure.
Okay, so what I'd like to ask is that, is there a majority of support to send this to the Budget and Governance Committee for a discussion? Okay, so what I'll ask, Madam City Manager, if you and relevant staff at HR and others would please just, you know, let, I'm chair of the committee, just let me know what time you have capacity to take that item up, and we will set that at a future Budget and Governance Committee meeting. Okay? Okay, so I have five items tonight, so yeah, well, this is how, this is, this is how we do. So in, as agenda setting for this coming year, and providing some some transparency and predictability, and also helping bring some of the items that we already know are coming to us. So there will be some items that are already set for the agenda in the January 18 meetings, work that staff have been working on. Some of that will include, just as foreshadowing, we will have some discussion most likely about Christie properties. We will also have some discussion about revenue measures for next year, things we have been preparing already. There are five items I would like to ask that the City Council give us some support for this evening to put on that agenda. Couple of them are going to be hopefully low-hanging fruit. The first is, I would like to ask that we move the Assembly Bill 361 discussion in action from the consent calendar to the action calendar at the January meeting, so we can have a discussion about our future actions as a City Council under AB 3671. 361. Is there, is there support of that, to do that? Okay? Member Donahue, do you have a question?
John, would you remind me a little bit more about that bill?
Well, that's, that's just to allow us to meet remotely. It's currently on the consent calendar, and we're approving it every meeting, and I would like to actually predictably tell you and the staff and the community that I'd like that to be on the action item, so that we can discuss the item, because I think we need to have a conversation about how the city is going to transition into a life with COVID. And I would like to have that discussion. Okay, I think being transparent with the community. Okay, that's the first item. The second item is, I would like to discuss having a permanent standing resolution to continuously hang the Pan-African flag during Black History Month every year for the month of February. We've done this for Pride Month, and we, last time I was mayor, we had a celebration and event to recognize Black History Month. And I don't believe that we should have to vote on this every year. I believe that we should have a standing resolution. But to discuss that, I need to have that on an agenda. So is that something people would be happy to discuss at the January 18 meeting? Okay, there's support for that. The third item
Mr. Mayor, could I just, on that one, would you like that on January 18 or February 1?
I would like to see, I would like to see if there's a direction on January 18 to do it, and if there is, we will pass it on the 1st of February, which is the beginning of the month. I don't want to put it on the agenda as like a presumptive thing if members have some, unless, unless you're happy with people saying, hey, let's just do it, we want to do that. I feel like it's a policy decision.
We'll bring it forward on the 18. Thank you for clarifying.
No problem, thank you. So we'll give guidance and discussion at that time. The third item is, there is going to be a presentation at the next meeting about, well, at the next regular meeting about the Christie properties and some of our work on the redevelopment agency. For later in the spring, there is a remaining property at the corner of Adeline and 36th Street. It's a little tiny parcel that we own. And I have a proposal for that site, and I would like to ask that we have a study session later in the spring for that, so it's not going to be at our next meeting. But if there's support for it, I would like to have the permission of council to work with staff to develop a presentation for what to do with that site. Okay, so Adeline property will be in the spring, Madam City Manager, and let's see, the next item is, I would like to ask that we have a discussion. Can also, City Manager can determine when the appropriate time for this is. I'd like to talk about lifting our current rule related to COVID parklets. So we agree that they could remain in place up to 180 days after the expiration of the governor's state of emergency. And I would like to talk about both ending the uncertainty around that and potentially just making them all permanent, and also creating a fixed window of time to encourage others to do this in the coming year, with the possibility of waiving or covering fees associated with that, because I've heard from a number of folks that they are interested, but they have been waiting to see what we would do about permanency. So I think we need to end the uncertainty around that item and maybe help deliver opportunity. So if there's support for revisiting the parklet regulations for COVID and making those permanent, there is unanimous support to do that. Madam City Manager, at a time that is efficient and convenient to staff with all the other things you're doing. And then the last one, which I want on the January 18 meeting schedule, which is going to be tied to a lot of things I think we'll discuss this coming year, I would like to actually have the city engage in a tree survey. And I would like to begin the conversation with the City Council about moving towards urban forestry in a, in a way that actually enhances the urban tree canopy, provides greater livability to the community, and there's some complex issues with that related to removing trees that actually do need to be removed from the city, replacing trees in tree walls, moving tree walls, structural soil issues. There's a number of issues with that, and the city should conduct a thorough survey in order to inform and educate our public around the opportunities we have to beautify our city to be a climate change actor and to improve community health. And so to start that process, I have things that will follow it in the future, but what I'd like to do is discuss a tree survey. Is there support to have a tree survey discussion as the start of our year? Yep, there's unanimous support for that. So staff will work as best as we can to have something to kind of outline what that could look like and give council a high-level discussion at the January 18 meeting. So I made a number of asks, and I have refrained from making an ask for the last few months, because there was a lot going on, so I'm a little guilty for making a bunch right now, but I felt like needed to table set some things. Okay, so I need to call for public comment for future agenda items. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Is there any written comment for future agenda item, Sherry?
No, there's not.
Okay, so that will conclude Agenda Item 14. The time is 9:31, and this meeting is adjourned. I wish everybody at the city of Emeryville, its staff, the members of council, and our community, a very, very merry Christmas, a happy New Year, any holiday that you are celebrating between now and the start of the new year, please know that your health, your safety, and more importantly than ever, your happiness are on our minds and in our hearts, and we wish you all a wonderful time with your loved ones, and we look forward to seeing you when we come back in 2022. Godspeed.